I believe it's 501, and the first item on the agenda is the annual comprehensive financial report. Summer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This will be the audit, is also known as the audit. And so in case you didn't know what those acronyms were for, but this is a process we go through every year just to verify our financials are where they need to be and what they said they were. And so now I'll turn it over to Laura Lent. She's with Whitley Penn, and they performed the audit, and she's got a presentation for you guys, and she'll be happy to answer any questions. We did review this with the subcommittee prior to this, so there was a review of that prior to that, and then we can go through that.
Okay, and you have the presentation loaded here? Okay, there we go, okay.
All right, good evening. My name is Laura Lent. I'm with Whitley Penn. I'm the audit senior manager, and I'm here to present the fiscal year 2024 financial statement audit results. Oh, sorry. Okay, there we go. So I just wanted to go over first the different people or responsibilities in the audit. So first we have management. They're responsible for the internal control and preparation of the financial statements. City Council is responsible for ensuring that management meets its responsibilities over internal controls and financial reporting. Then we have the subcommittee that assists city council with their oversight of management to meet those responsibilities. And then our job as auditors is to accumulate the audit evidence necessary to form our opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. So part of that process, or what our process is, we start early in the year, and we go through and do our planning, do our risk assessment process. We gain an understanding of the internal controls, and we test those internal controls as well. After we complete that, then we take a look, we start doing our substantive testing. What the substantive testing means, we confirm cash investment balances, we confirm other balances, we confirm the debt balances, we gather information to do analytical procedures using data provided by the city, and then we complete that process in order to issue our opinion on the financial statements. There are three audit opinions on the next slide that can be issued. A disclaimer would be that when we came into audit the financial statements, that the records were in such a state that we couldn't issue an opinion. In the middle, you have a qualification, and that would be that there's some modification or a departure from GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. And then an unmodified or clean opinion, which is what is issued on the next slide, is so our report on the financial statements, we do have an unmodified or clean opinion, and what that means is the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, and the audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. We do have an auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting. That report does have material weaknesses identified this year, and that is related to the account reconciliations not being performed throughout the year, which led to multiple corrections to the financial statements in order to get the financial statements to be materially correct. And those are related to accounts payable and expenditures, capital assets, debt and debt service payments, accounts receivable, and revenues. We had no instances noted of noncompliance and no instances of fraud. So taking a quick look just at the statement of net position, so this includes your governmental activities as well as your business type activities, keeping in mind this is as of 9/30/2024. You had total assets and deferred outflows of $604 million, primarily consisted of cash and investments of $231 million, and then capital assets, net of depreciation and amortization of $351 million. You also had total liabilities and deferred inflows of $418 million, primarily consisting of bonds payable of $334 million, your net pension liability of $36 million, and your other post-employment or OPEB liability of $3 million. The net pension liability and OPEB liability are not liabilities that the city will have to pay out in cash payments. They're estimates the actuaries come up with related to the city's estimated net pension and OPEB liability, and the way that's paid out is through the contributions that are made as part of the percentage of payroll every year that are contributed towards those liabilities to bring your net position to $185.8 million. Taking a look at a breakdown of your total long-term liabilities, so you did increase at the end of 9/30/2023, you were at $234 million, increased to almost $400 million, and that's related to increase in your general obligation bonds that were issued. You are up to $139 million. And 9/30/24, your certificates of obligations remain $86 million. And then you had revenue bonds. You did issue additional revenue bonds in your water sewer fund, and that balance is up to $107 million. Then your remaining obligations, you had your sales tax obligation, your finance purchases, which relate to your enterprise leases, and then your compensated absence balances, as well as those net pension and OPEB liabilities that I mentioned on the previous slide. Taking a look at your governmental fund financials, so this is going to be your general fund, your debt service, capital projects, and your other non-major funds that make up the remaining governmental funds. In your general fund, you did have a fund balance increase of $2.5 million, so you increased from $6.5 to $9 million. In your debt service fund, you had an increase of $360,000, so you went from $1.6 to $1.9 million. And in your capital projects fund, you had a large increase, and that again is related to the general obligation bonds that were issued in 2024. So your remaining fund balance at the end of '24 in your capital projects fund was $91 million to pay all those upcoming projects. And then your non-major funds, you had a decrease of $2.2 million from $5.7 million down to $3.4. So your total governmental fund balances were ended at $105.9 million. If you take a look at your general fund budget to actual at 9/30/24, again, fund balance increased by $2.5 million. You had revenues over budget by about $8 million, and a big portion of that was related to your ARPA money that had been deferred previously and had to be recognized in 2024. And then your expenditures over budget by $4.4 million in public safety and culture and recreation, but again, an increase to fund balance of $2.5. And if you take a look, your general fund, unassigned fund balance, so the unassigned fund balance means everything that's available in the general fund to be used for operations. So you have that unassigned fund balance of $9.1 million, which represents about 90 days of general fund expenditures. The remaining slides are required communication as auditors. So as part of our audit, we look at the accounting policies of the city to make sure they're appropriate and in accordance with industry standards. We look at accounting estimates, and not every number in the financial statement is tied to a specific amount. We look at those estimates, your allowance for doubtful accounts, for utility billing, property taxes. We look at the estimates, the basis that goes into those estimates. And then the net pension and OPEB liabilities, again, we talked about those are done by the actuaries for the plans, and we look at the underlying information that goes into those and see that they agree with the city's records. And we determine that the accounting estimates are reasonable and have reasonable basis for the estimates. We also talked about the material weaknesses, the difficulties encountered in performing the audit due to the reconciliations that were required and the delay of the audit. But I do want to thank Summer and Michelle for kind of pulling together and helping get through all of that and providing all the information and getting everything to the point where we could issue the financial statements in our opinion. The misstatements that were identified have been presented to management and discussed with management and will be posted to make sure that the records agree to the financial statements. We had no disagreements with management over the application of accounting principles or judgment about accounting estimates. The last piece of the audit that we get is the management representation letter, and that is just saying from management that they've provided everything we've asked for. No information has been withheld, and accepting the responsibility for the financial statements. We know no consultations with other accountants, and we had no major issues discussed with management prior to our retention as auditors. And I believe that concludes the presentation. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? I'd like to thank Michelle for helping us out with that. I know you made a significant contribution in addition to your real job. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to tell Michelle thank you to council, and you guys realize that she really did step in in addition to the finance team. And Laura, thank you for being patient with us. I know there was some challenges that we had to overcome, you know, many of them. It was just one right after the other, but I'm really glad to see this get across the finish line. So I appreciate you being patient with us, and Michelle, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So you really, really, really helped us out. So I just want to say thank you and let council know that she did step up. And Alicia, well, she was still here before she retired, offered her services, and I called her and said, I'm going to need to take you up on that favor, and Michelle stepped right in. So they were very, very helpful. So I appreciate that.
I do have a question. That's all right. Do we have a plan to address the weaknesses that they identified with the reconciliations? Is that a question for Ben, maybe?
Probably, mostly, yeah. And I know Michelle and Ben have already met, and they're attacking those already for the next audit, you know, with the adjusting entries and things like that, things that we can do along the ways to address those. I don't know if you want to add to any of that, Laura?
We've already also discussed a planning meeting with Michelle and Ben, and we'll kind of go through all of the entries that we did and, you know, come up with a checklist for those entries and the accounts and how they need to go through and reconcile. I mean, they know how to reconcile, but they, you know, just us going through and kind of, here's the issues that we identified to help them get through those and reconcile. And really the plan is, you know, for the audit this year is we won't start the audit until they've had a chance to go in and reconcile. So we won't start off the way we did, you know, this year. We'll start off with reconciled books. I'll be happy to answer questions. You know, we can answer questions during the process as they go through and do those, but to start off with reconciled balances.
I guess for fiscal years going forward, say, I guess, starting in '26, the idea would be to reconcile more frequently, right?
Yes, oh, definitely.
Well, and that's what she's saying. They're starting that planning meeting, so even fiscal years '25s will be reconciled before she even starts.
Right.
So it's not having to be done either during or at the end
Right.
to make sure everything's stated and up to date, and all transfers are done, and journal entries are all done. So that's what Ben and Michelle are kind of, and Michelle's helping him identify kind of where those were so he can attack those.
So Ben's going to be really busy for a few months.
Yeah, there is some catch-up. So, yeah, so we're starting that process.
Start calling in your reconciler.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much for helping us with that and your report. And at this time, we'll go into executive session. We'll be back at 6 o'clock for the regular session meeting.
I'll, uh...
I don't remember what year it was.
I guess Ben's gonna... I guess I'll just call it. It'll work.
Okay, I'll call this, uh, regular citizen to Greenville City Council to order. Let the record reflect, it's, uh, 6:05. And, uh, we'd like to call Robert Bernie up, our superintendent of water treatment plant, to offer the invocation. Thank you for being here tonight, Robert.
Oh, I'll take your hands off. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this city and the opportunity to serve it. Lord, we pray for our mayor, our city council members, the city staff, that we will lead them with wisdom and strength, uh, and a clear sense of doing what's just best for this city and its citizens. Lord, help our council members listen to one another with open hearts and minds and work together. Uh, Lord, we ask that this meeting is productive and the outcomes are what's best for the city and everyone that lives here, Lord. Lord, I want to thank you for all the blessings that you give each and every one of us. Lord, and most of all, I want to thank you for your, you giving your, your one and only son for each and every one of us to know what ever loving, our everlasting love is, Lord. Lord, thank you for everything you do. Watch over us and keep us safe on the way home. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have, uh, a couple of presentations tonight. Uh? Not supposed to. Just use this? Okay, okay. We have a little trouble with, does she want to come up too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank y'all for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so, uh, this is a proclamation regarding domestic violence month, whereas domestic violence is a severe pervasive crime that affects millions of women, men, children, and communities across the United States each year, violating the basic human rights of safety and dignity. Whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, gender, ability, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion, and whereas an average of 20 people experience some form of domestic violence every 60 seconds, 216 Texans lost their lives due to domestic violence in 2022, and over 10 million people are victimized by domestic violence each year. That's sad. Whereas Domestic Violence Month highlights the urgent need for our community to come together in preventing domestic violence, standing united in support of survivors, organizations like Women in Need play a critical role in providing shelter, advocacy, and empowering survivors to rebuild their lives with dignity. So, we present this, uh, on behalf of the city council to you guys. Would you like to say something about when?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. I just wanted to let you guys know that this last year, Women in Need served 706 non-duplicated clients. That doesn't include the thousands of repeat services that we've done, whether that's support group going to court, helping them get the protective orders that they need. Thank you, sir. We had 176 come through our shelter, and 71 of those were children. So, the need is great, but I'm thankful for a city that supports us and stands with survivors and says that we won't tolerate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it. Can we have another presentation?
We wanted to take this opportunity tonight to let y'all know, if you didn't already know, that our fire marshal Jake Papa Giorgio has retired. Um, also wanted to, to take the opportunity to publicly recognize Jake and, uh, just for his enduring commitment to the safety of the citizens of Greenville and those that he worked with. You know, in 2015, Jake signed on as our fire marshal. It was kind of a turbulent time for us, um, a lot of change of leadership, and a lot of us didn't really know what we were doing. And, uh, he was given little help in that transition. Most of us really didn't know the job, including Jake, but Jake was willing to stand up at the time and, and really take that on and learn it. And, uh, you know, the leader that he was, he stepped up when we needed him. And if you ever had the opportunity to be around Jake when he was doing his job, you could see the commitment that he had to the citizens of Greenville. Um, and not only that, it wasn't just the citizens, it was the brotherhood, you know, the firefighters. As, as soon as he knew that the citizens were safe, or he felt like the citizens were safe, his next question is, all right, are the firefighters going to be safe when they come here? And so, uh, it was just, you always saw it on Jake's face, he was always worried. He was never comfortable in his job, and to me, that always meant that he was trying to learn and just always trying to do better. And so, uh, you know, he, Jake meant the world to me. We worked our entire career together. We rose through the ranks together from firefighter to driver. He was my driver when I was a captain, and honestly, he was possibly the worst driver that I could ever imagine. Countless times, he, he scared the bejesus out of me, and, uh, he knows that, that's no secret. But, uh, at the end of the day, I couldn't think of a better person to serve as the city of Greenville's fire marshal. And, uh, he really, he just did an amazing job. Um, you know, Jake, he might be retiring, and he's no longer with us, but Jake's legacy and the standard that Jake set and our fire marshals off will, will continue for a very long time, well past the time that, that he leaves. So, uh, Jake, you see us tonight. Thank you for your commitment to the city of Greenville, our brotherhood, and we wish you nothing but the very best in your retirement.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, I will, uh, call your attention to two placeholders in the agenda. Citizens to be heard in public testimony. Citizens to be heard, or citizens to be heard are invited to address the council on topics not already scheduled for public hearing or listed on the agenda. Public testimony occurs when citizens are invited to address the council on topics already on the agenda, starting tonight with item 7A ordinances. So, uh, if you'd like to address the city council on any of these issues, please present a citizens commac tor, card to the city secretary. And I'll just ask, are there citizens? None tonight, okay? So, we'll move right on to item, uh, 7A ordinance, consideration action on ordinance amending the city of Greenville, Texas ordinance on, related to unauthorized camping. Daniel.
All right, you have in front of you a revised ordinance. Uh, in February last year, the city passed a camping, uh, ordinance, um, that basically, uh, made it, uh, illegal to camp in certain areas and at certain times of day. There were a lot of different, uh, sections of that that, uh, didn't work as well in practice, uh, as, uh, as expected. And so, what's in the packet tonight is a completely revised ordinance, um, uh, that comes in line with several important, um, uh, Supreme Court decisions and new laws from the state, and those are, uh, actually referenced in the ordinance. Uh, the Supreme Court decision in the city of Grants Pass versus Johnson, which came out last year, uh, and was a lawsuit against a, a small city in Oregon, uh, that had a similar, uh, ordinance. And then, uh, the legislature passed two different laws, um, changes to the health and safety code, code related to, uh, this area of regulation. And so, uh, this, um, the proposed changes, um, beef up, uh, the ability of the city to enforce the rules, uh, even when there's campsites that are clearly logically campsites, but don't fit, uh, within certain, um, uh, scope shrinking language. Uh, like last time, we had, uh, language that required, or currently, the language required that there be a transitory shelter of some sort, like a sheet or a blanket or a cardboard box. Uh, this does away with that and instead, uh, adopts, uh, the, uh, test that the Texas legislature and the Supreme Court have passed. Um, there's also a new, uh, completely new section on removal and abatement of unauthorized campsites. Uh, if somebody falls into, um, these definitions, uh, and, uh, has a campsite, then the city, uh, once it meets certain notice requirements, can remove that campsite, but, uh, the city's then required to, um, hold the, uh, materials that are removed for a 30-day period so that those people can come pick them up, uh, before, uh, the time when it's ultimately destroyed or, uh, thrown away. Um, there's a recovery of cost section, which was missing from the first, uh, effort, uh, which will allow the city to recover the costs of a removal of a camp, especially from a, um, absentee landowner who doesn't respond to city notification, um, of a problem on their property. If they don't, uh, do anything about it, uh, within the right time period, which is also specifically addressed in here, uh, and the city has to spend $20,000 to remove it, uh, then the city has what it needs under this, uh, to make a secondary decision about, uh, seeking payment of those costs from the absentee. Uh, and so, um, there's a whole lot of different, uh, ins and outs here. It, it basically doubles the, uh, length of the ordinance, but, uh, this was done after a consultation with a department, uh, who's been enforcing the current, uh, version of it and learning along the ways, the loopholes and problems in the first draft. And this, uh, set of revisions is meant to address, uh, all of those loopholes though.
Any questions regarding this item? And I'll just ask again, there is no public testimony tonight, okay? I want to ask, okay, is there, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 7A?
I make a motion that we, um, approve this proposed ordinance change with an amendment to reduce the time to enforcement to three business days.
And you're talking about, just for clarification, you're talking about the, the 10 days that's in, uh, paragraph, uh, 10.06.03A?
Yes.
Um, changing that from, uh, 10 to three days. And then, there's another paragraph on the next page, 100604B, talking about changing that from 11 to four to ma, make it match with...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and that is the, so you want to adopt this with those two changes as, as otherwise as written?
Yes.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Please vote. Item 8A will be postponed. Move to Item 8B, consideration and action on a resolution approving a contract with Bartlett West for the design of a water line from Ridge Quest to Ridge Crest, CR 2142.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Glass, City Engineer. It's good to see you all tonight. I'm here to introduce the resolution to approve a contract with Bartlett West for the design of a water line, about three miles worth, a water line from Ridge Crest to Canver 4142. This is for future growth of the city on the west side and also for the growth of wholesale customers as well. And the amount, the amount of the contract is $148,955.
Are there any questions regarding this item, 8B? Okay, if there are none, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And it passes unanimously. Item 8C, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing a contract with Harper Brothers Construction LLC for the industrial pump station and storage tanks project.
Good evening. Good evening, City Councilman and Mayor. This is just to come in, just to give you a little background and history on the industrial tire was built in 1981 at a volume of 500,000 gallons. And at that time, it was perfect for what the industrial area needed. And everybody's seen the growth that we have with businesses and cattle mills and with that growth, that pump station is not, it's not adequate no more. It won't keep up with the demand that we have for the industrial sector and everybody else that feeds off of. And due to that growth, like I said, we're experiencing, the industrial tire pump station, it's not functioning like it's supposed to because that pump, the pump station's not large enough to keep up with the demand. And this project, it's going to replace the 500,000 gallon elevated storage with one, two million gallon elevated storage, two, one million gallon clear wells, a pump station there that'll be plenty big enough to keep up with demand now and demand for the future, along with the storage also. So this is what I'm asking for, I'm asking if we can go, consider going in or authorizing this contract with the industrial pump station and stores with the Harper Brothers LLC. We took it out to bid, this project was taken out to bid on July 26. Seal bids were open in these council chambers and then we had multiple companies that bid on it. And Harper Brothers, we did a scoring, we sat down with several of us, we sat down and did a scoring evaluation on them and we came up with Harper Brothers. And we're asking for that fund of, I think it's 27,981,328 to get this project going with Harper Brothers.
Wasn't this originally estimated about $40 million?
Yes, that's correct. It was about, we put in originally 40 million, a little over 40 million.
Yep.
So what happens with the bond, allocated bond money for this that's not spent? Are the, we just don't sell those bonds or how does that work?
No, we've already sold those, we've already sold those bonds, so we'll just allocate them to different projects that we won't have to fund in the 2026 bond.
Gotcha.
So we have a few projects in mind then, and I've met with, I met with the group, kind of the design team with Lee and the superintendents, and so we identified some of those, which includes like upgrading lines?
Yep.
That will serve, that will help serve this, which will help down 1570, some water and sewer and some future developments that'll help, especially down 1570 in that area. So we'll keep it in the water infrastructure side of things.
Cool, all right.
Any other questions? If not, what is the, is there a motion regarding this item, 8C?
Make a motion to approve.
My second.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. Ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City Council meeting minutes from October 14th. A resolution approving replacement of the HVAC water chiller for the municipal building first floor, as well as the energy automation control system for the entire building HVAC system within the City of Greenville. And a resolution approving annual contract for concrete with Amcorp for use by the Street and Water Division.
Are there any questions regarding any of these items? And if not, is there a motion regarding the consent calendar?
A move that we approve?
Second.
And it passes unanimously. Item 10, monthly status report summary. Going to catch us up today, right?
Yes, that's correct. So this will be the, if you remember during the cyber incident, we were unable to retrieve the data that was needed for this report, both on the CO side as well as on the public work side, due to not having access to ENCODE and Open, Intergov as well. So this is actually updating July, August and September. So if you have any questions, we can do that. But if you'll see for the utility cuts by the contractor, those stayed pretty even, 31, 21 and 26 for those months. For the pothole in-house repairs, July was 220, we went down to 172 in August and then back up to 203 in September. Street sweeping miles stayed pretty consistent at 441, 411 and then 407 in September. They were able to mow the areas 100% during, and I just did during this, but all three months, they were able to mow those areas at 100%. Line of sight intersections were 10, 11 and 9. Signs replaced were 89, 94 and then jumped down to 44 for the month of September. Building permits issued, 22, 17 and then back up to 26 for September. And then COs issued were 35, 15 and 16. And then traffic citations, 540, dropped down to 62, that was the month that the systems were down, and then back up to 276. And then the raw water line, so this is a little bit updated from the last time, so they are done fusing pipe from Reservoir 5 all the way to Lake Tewocany. So now they're just cleaning up the easements, replanning grass, seed, things like that, rebuilding fences, gates, things like that, kind of punch list items that Robert's going through the contractor with. So those things are happening right now, but they are done fusing and installing that pipe. So they are also done installing from the north end of the reservoir to the new outlet for the new south water treatment plant. That's the loop that we asked for. So they've moved over, once they were completed on the raw water line, they moved over to that section. And then the last line there, the header pump project is 98% complete. VFDs will be here three to five weeks, that should be a little lower.
They're here now.
Okay.
We're just waiting on the HVAC.
The install, yeah, the HVAC system in the building to keep those cooled down for those drives is what we're waiting for. The building's complete, concrete's complete, everything's like that. So that project, so especially when everything gets done and complete, we would like to take you guys down there. I know it's out of sight, out of mind because it's way down there, but you'll, if you'll see it, if you knew what it looked like before to what it looks like, it looks like an actual pump station now. It's pretty impressive. So the investment that we're putting into that is well worth it for the future growth of what we've got in this whole entire, not just our city, but in the region as well. So it's impressive once you're out there. Looks totally different. I haven't even been down there in a while. So it's made some changes. And on the street project side of things, the Mill and Overlay for Chiltonham and also for First Street, that's First Street that you see the picture of there, is complete and done. That was at a cost of 153, 53,68250. So in total, 3,986 tons of asphalt were placed just with those two streets. So those were very successful. The contractor that did those, Chris, is very happy with. So he's putting a plan together now based on the condition, the PCI and the traffic to have for next year's, actually for the current year budget that we're in now, to spend that 750,000. We'll get that together, go to the Transportation Committee, and then we'll move that forward with the contractor, put it out to bid and go forward with that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for catching us up. Item 11, City Council discussion of proposed agenda items. Are there any items that the council would like to bring, or council, bring before the council, I guess you should say? Like to be, have discussed? If not, there are no board commission minutes. We're going back into executive session under Section 551.071, Paragraphes 1 and 2, and we do anticipate voting when we come out of executive session tonight. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here.
Everybody could hear me. We're back in regular session, let the record reflect it is 7:16 I think.
And is there a motion?
I move that the council approve a fee simple transfer of lots previously sold under project restored to current holders Al and Tammy Schaefer for the properties within current Hunt CAD number 48164 with documents to be finalized and signed by the city manager subject to inclusion of two restrictions. One, a restriction in the deed that any monies borrowed against the value of the property be required to be spent on or adjacent to the properties. And two, a five-year clawback provision specifying that if construction is not substantially complete on any of the individual lots by five years from the day of transfer, those lots will revert to city ownership with no corresponding financial obligation to the Schaefer's.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. And that item passes unanimously, is there a second motion?
Yes. I move that the city... I move that the city approve the purchase agreement for a waterline and electric transmission and distribution easement property from Astoria Homes LLC comprised of 52.52 acres of land for a sales price of $2,317 and authorize the city manager to complete all documents to finalize that sale.
For a second.
A second.
Please vote. And that item passes unanimously. Thank you for coming tonight, this regular session is adjourned.